Okay, Mark. Mark, testing. Mark, can you hear me? Raise your right hand. Okay.
But we can't hear you.
Mark, is the volume turned up on your microphone? Oh, Paul's getting down.
Oh, he's trying to talk again. He can't, we can't hear him.
Hmm.
I think I have the chat.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
Looks like Gene's still trying to connect to audio.
Can they enter questions in the chat?
I don't have the chat function. Disabled on both.
Okay.
Hold on a second. Let me see as the host if I can add it. I don't want to rename myself. The only option is that. That seems insane. Oh, man, did you want Ash to do the one?
Yeah, he can if he wants to.
If we can hear him. Maybe test his and see if it's a mic issue.
Yeah. Hey, Ash, can you hear us? Okay, we can't hear you, though. I see, I see your lips moving, but...
If you're the only one speaking, I wonder if you could log in here. And if nobody else is here, I can come up here. So I can speak from the Zoom. And then I can log in and I'll be able to do it through Zoom again.
Say that again.
I'm wondering if we just got someone that don't do this. How about if you just do it where they don't want to do it? Or just full Zoom if nobody's here? And I can do it from up here. You just log in, you're the only speaker. If you want me to do this, you can see I can do it from up here.
Okay.
Maybe some feedback if anyone new, but...
Yeah. Um, did you hear that, Paul?
No.
I'm wondering if we don't do the hard... I can't hear them.
Yeah. Right, we might have to go to Zoom.
For full Zoom.
And still stream it.
Right, as of, yeah.
Yeah.
So there'd be feedback if Tim and I are on this one, right? So I need to do it from downstairs? So like, do you get to them? I mean, I think there'd be feedback if you and I just spoke.
There was the machine headphones that we were talking about. It's just really weird. I just can't figure out why we can't hear them. I mean, we can hear the output of a computer, but we don't hear the output.
So...
So what I would, you would log in. I'd make you the host for right now, and then I'd have to log back out. Because I have to shut it down. Oh, which system is it? I don't even know how to set it. So Ash is trying to say what it looks like, right?
Yep.
Yeah, because I'm screening now. I'm talking on my...
Oh, so they could hear each other. Oh, so they could hear each other.
All right, we're doing a little improvisation here. So we're gonna do...
He can hear you much clearer. Can you hear us now?
Can hear you now, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, now, yes?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Paul, it may make sense if you say it out this way. What's that? It may make sense if you say it out this way? Yes. Um...
People from the public in on our Zoom meeting. And the purpose here is to go through some of the Warren articles, or actually go through all the Warren articles. Provide a little bit more detail. And if there are any questions that you may have, you can ask. And hopefully, we'll be able to answer them right away. So, without further ado, um, I'll just go right into the Warren articles. Uh, first one is Article One, Free Cash Transfer. So every year, we have what's known as free cash certified by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. It's generally the balance at the end of the year after you look at all of our revenues and you deduct all the expenses. And what we've done since 2014, I believe, might have been 2013, is we have created a set of financial policies which direct where this free cash money goes to. Uh, we've put it in the General Stabilization Fund, or what's known as our Rainy Day Fund. We put it in a trust fund that is designed to handle and pay for other post-employment benefits. And that's retiree health insurance. Depending on the situation, we may put it in a special education, special purpose stabilization fund. And then we also put a portion into capital. And really, the amount that goes into each is predicated on how much is in our rainy day fund at that time. So this year, we have $2,025,000 in free cash, which is a little bit lower than in previous years, but still a healthy amount. Uh, this is a good thing. Um, and based on our financial policies, we're putting 1.2 million into our General Stabilization Fund, our Rainy Day Fund. 202,000 into our OPEB Trust Fund. Uh, we will be putting zero in the Special Education Stabilization Fund because it's reached its cap. And then we have 607,000 slated to go towards capital, or deferred capital from town meeting. Um, and that list is part of the capital plan that was presented back in the spring of this year. So if anybody has any questions on this, if not, I will move on to the next one. Mark, you have a question?
Uh, yes, I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm just one of those curious questions. Is ARPA money going to be brought into this fund too?
No. No. ARPA cannot be used for rainy day funds, stabilization funds, or to reduce taxes.
Okay, so, um, this is just a regular, uh, agenda by the finance committee and all of that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, not seeing any more questions. I'll move to Article Two. That's titled "The Reauthorization of Public Safety Building Bonds." I'll try to explain this as clearly and succinctly as I can. Uh, everybody sees the public safety building being constructed on 135. Again, I want to thank everybody who supported that. It's long needed. And it's an exciting thing to watch, being constructed. We actually paid for that in two different tranches. So the first thing we did is we had a debt exclusion back in 2018 for 3.5 million to do the design and engineering. And then we had a debt exclusion for January, which was around 20, 27 million for the construction of the public safety building. So we could only use the design and engineering money for design and engineering. What we would like to do is we would like to take any remaining balance that's in the engineering funds and reauthorize it to be used for construction funding. And so that way, just, I want to be clear, it does not increase the project costs at all. We're simply reauthorizing what one, um, set of money can be used for. And, um, and basically making it more flexible. Uh, this will give us the opportunity to hopefully do things like solar on top of the public safety building. And have, if we have any kind of unforeseen expenses, take care of that as part of our contingency. Any questions regarding that? Okay. So Article Three is, um, our annual article for property tax exemptions for qualifying seniors. Um, this is under Master in Law Chapter 59, Section Five, Clause 41(c) and a half. Ashland is one of the few communities that actually utilizes the 41(c) and a half option. And what that entails is the exemption amount is a percentage of, uh, of the property tax exemption for senior citizens. And then that corresponds to a specific dollar amount that, um, senior citizens do not have to pay for. Um, this year, it's going to be 11.25%, which translates into $823. And that's an estimated. We won't know for sure until we get the tax rate certified at the end of the year. But it has steadily increased over the years. Uh, we've made some, some bigger jumps. I think in previous years, it used to be $500. Then we made a big jump to, you know, almost 700. Then we made another big jump to 800, and here we are. So again, this is for qualifying seniors. It's property tax relief that's needed and deserved. Any questions regarding the property tax exemption? Okay. Article Four is "To Extend the End Date of the River Rock Trail Enhancement Project: The Mill Pond Beautification and Stone Bungalow Preservation Projects." So what this does is it extends the date that we have to utilize those funds. It's not a, uh, it's not additional funding. It simply extends the date, um, that expired in June of, uh, earlier this year, June of 2021. It extends it to December 31st, 2023 for all three projects. So again, this doesn't add more money to that. It just extends the time by which we have to, um, that we have to expend it. Obviously, there's still a couple of things that we need to do with regards to all three projects. And so this will give us the flexibility to do that. Any questions on this one? Okay. Moving right along. Article Five is another Community Preservation Committee article. Uh, sorry, I should have predicated the first one by saying that's a Community Preservation Committee-sponsored article as well. But Article Five is "Authorized Funding for Marathon Park Enhancements." Marathon Park is located on Pleasant Street, um, across from the train station. It's the original starting line for the Boston Marathon, and a park was created there not too, too long ago. Uh, this funding is 90, excuse me, 97,500. Um, and it is going to be used to basically spruce up the, uh, the park itself, remove invasive species, um, put some plantings, landscaping, hardscaping, um, install, installation, and even relocation of the existing signage, adding some pavers. It's a pretty comprehensive project. And this is 97,500. 48,750 of that is going to come from the CPC Open Space Bucket. And 48,750 is coming from the CPC Undesignated Reserve Bucket. Any questions regarding this CPC article? Okay. We'll move on to Article Six with, uh, which is an MWRA bond for I and I work. Um, so this is a, an authorization that we encounter every other year. It's MWRA's program to help municipalities with their inflow and infiltration issues, which is essentially the town sewer system, uh, is, is obviously underground. uh, is, is obviously underground, and what happens is sometimes we get seepage into, into those pipes. Does it sound like a big deal? But if you recall, we actually have to pay for, you know, sewage that goes through Framingham, and then we also have to pay for it to be treated at Deer Island. So we want as little gallonage going out there as possible, flowing through there as possible. It, um, it's better for us environmentally, and it's better for us financially. Uh, this program provides a grant and a, um, no interest loan over ten years to help us do this work. And this year's round is, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, so seventy-five percent of that will be a grant. Uh, the remainder will be a no interest loan. And this is something that we will be handling within the water operating budget, so we do not have to raise rates regarding this. So, does anybody have any questions regarding this one? Mark?
Yeah, this is just a quick one. It's just, with these sewage rates not gonna be moved at, at all to, to our rate payers, though. Is this gonna be part, the one twenty-six underground pipe, is that gonna be part payment on that?
Is this going to be used to help with the one twenty-six project?
Yeah, because, uh, because there's a Framingham Town Line, and then it takes from there to Deer Island.
None of these funds are gonna be utilized on the one twenty-six project, Mark. Um, that's, the, the vast majority of that is state funded. All the drainage work.
So, uh, I'm just, that's the thing. Uh, so, um, for the pipes, sewage, and not gonna be handed to rate payers. This is gonna be such a, a home rule thing, right?
A home rule thing?
It's gonna stay in Ashland?
Yes, it will stay in Ashland. Th- this funding will stay in Ashland. You good? Okay, perfect. Um, without any further questions, I'll move on to our last article, which is Article Eight, which is a resolution calling for, uh, building decarbonization in the Commonwealth. Uh, and this is sponsored by the Sustainability Committee. I see we have a number of Sustainability Committee members on the Zoom call right now. And Ash, I would like to, uh, offer, offer the mic, the virtual mic up to you if you want to, uh, try to take people through this one.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Michael. So, uh, the, the reason for this, uh, resolution is that our Commonwealth has an awkward legal structure in which it doesn't really permit local towns and municipalities to do much with regards to, to, uh, making the right climate decisions. And at the same time, the state has a legal binding requirement to come up with a way to achieve eighty-five percent reductions in, in their, in the overall, uh, emissions at the state level, uh, by, uh, by twenty forty. Uh, so what this resolution tries to, is asking to do is, one, it's providing support to two, two pieces of legislation that are currently ordered the House and, and the Senate. It's asking for the Board of Building Regulations, um, to, to clarify the rules that apply to towns. And it's also asking the state to take some meaningful action so that individual communities don't have to start taking action on their own to try and achieve their climate goals. Uh, what this resolution does not do is change any rules or regulations for us internally at, at the local level. Um, what it's really trying to do is clarify the rules as it applies to the state as a whole. Uh, with the expectation that once those bills move forward, we would be able to make the right sense for the citizens for Ashland's, uh, Ashland ourselves, where right now we don't really have the ability to do it. We do have some things we can do in town, which, uh, the planning board is considering. We've had some conversations with, but largely speaking our hands are pretty tight. Um, so, so we're really looking for clarification, uh, from the state, providing support to those two, uh, bills that are making their way through the state, and asking for clarification from the state, uh, you know, on, on, on he, he, basically removing, you know, confusing regulation. And finally, we have a, a serious concern about how any of the changes that could be required for us to achieve net zero by twenty forty, which is, you know, our goal in Ashland, um, will impact, uh, you know, economic justice communities or social justice communities. And it's our belief that without the state making some comprehensive moves, um, it would put Ashland and towns like Ashland in a very awkward position to not be able to support those communities appropriately, so we're really looking for the state to take some leadership here. I'm happy to take any questions, but that's roughly, you know, what we're asking for, is providing support to, to the state and, and asking the BRB to really clarify their regulations.
Thanks, Ash. I think that was a pretty, pretty succinct explanation of a couple of pages worth of, uh, text. That's really good. Anybody have any, any questions about this? Mark? You're up.
My basic question is, how does this state be compared to the Ashland bylaws and to the Ashland bylaws above my pick, my little bit, the, uh, form basis? What does that have to do with, it's gonna be described later?
Ash, I can take a shot at this if you'd, if you'd like.
Sure. Sure, I'm happy to support you.
So, Mark, this actually does nothing to impact the form-based code that we currently have. That's really based on the physical design and the built design. And, um, of, of, of projects, of private development projects. So this, this really, this has no impact on that.
So if, once it gets talked on, and if, and it's, it's, that's zero subject. How this gets through town being to understand that it's gonna be worked together.
So the, are you asking about the process, Mark? Um, so I believe if town meeting votes in favor of this, um, it will be formally sent to, um, the legislature, probably the Department of Public Utilities, probably a number of other state agencies, Ash, that.
That's right, BRB, the, uh, the town, it's not obviously to the Senate, to the, to the House, and, and then to the Secretary of State. Basically, it just gets sent to them, saying, I shouldn't support it. The, the reason why it's important to do this, Mark, is there are a number of existing communities that are also taking similar steps, and it's really putting pressure on the state to show that, uh, you know, with one voice, that the communities really are looking for this kind of guidance and clarification. Uh, um, so, so we're really making a move in the hope that state, the state will do the right thing. If they don't, then, then there are other options, but right now we really would not wanna go rogue as such and, and would want the state to take, take leadership in this, really, or, or that. This is a positive one.
And I think, Ash, if you don't wanna use the option in the case, it's a no.
I think if, if the resolution doesn't pass, I think we would have to think clearly about what it is that the residents of the town want, they want to achieve. Uh, I think we are in the process of drafting a net zero plan for Ashland, you know, which is, which is a parallel activity that's happening. And part of that activity requires, and, and we will be reaching out to residents to provide input, to other stakeholders to provide input into the plan. And I think we'd really look to take direction from the town and from residents in the town to see where they wanna go and, and how they wanna achieve the, the twenty forty goal that, that we all collectively agree to. Uh, we've got some thoughts about it. In our mind, electrification is probably the, the only viable path towards achieving those goals. This, this resolution really does focus on building decarbonization. Um, i- if the town chooses not to go in this direction, then, then I think we have to have a honest conversation with ourselves as to whether that goal is something we really wanna achieve and, and, and what it is that we wanna, wanna do with it, I think.
And through the town manager, what the, if it does, you know, yes, which I'm hoping it does, would the action bylaws, I mean, say, of the direction of that?
Um, this particular, this particular matter, Mark?
Yeah, because it's, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be. It's a, it's a. And it's all gonna be going through, and through the Sustainability Committee, too.
Mm-hmm.
But it's gonna be a town forward thinking. Yes or no?
Yes.
So that's why we're looking back at the Ashland bylaws and the codes and all that.
If I may, Michael.
Sure.
Mark, the, the reality is that there are very limited things that we can do, just if we would explore those options, right? Uh, but it, uh, there is those options. What's permitted by law, we would obviously explore those, right? But again, I think if we wanted to stay in lockstep with what the town overall wants to achieve, where they wanna go, and I think it's, it's probably, eh, I, I'm not sure it's valuable at this stage to, to speculate on, on if and when something happens, right? I think we would probably take a pause at that stage and, and, and try and come up with a strategy that makes sense for the town, you know, in, in the circumstances that we are in.
And I'm not, I'm not negatively speculating or anything like that when I'm saying, what if, and how can it come, that's how.
I, I think we'd take a step back and get really seriously think about it as permitting. I think we'd engage, uh, more widely with our ideas, stakeholders, to try and come up with the right kind of options for the town, I think.
And through the town town manager departments, there.
Obviously, obviously.
This is wh- this is why all these means, tones, things, and all of that, oh, especially for me, is any future for the net zero. To help out if it can go forward, or if the state and town comes up for the, uh, the cement wall in between, and it's gotta be well, uh, to get forward on it. Thank you.
I agree, Mark. Okay, any further questions on this last Warren article? Rob's thinking about one. I can see it in his eyes right now. But, um, well, seeing that there actually are no questions, uh, I want to thank you all for joining us. Again, this was our town meeting forum for the town meeting, uh, scheduled for December first. Uh, that's Wednesday at Ashland High School at seven P M. We'll be returning this year to the auditorium. We've been having the last couple, um, town meetings in the gymnasium, so we could separate a little bit easier and better. Uh, but we are moving back to the auditorium at this point in time. So, um, again, I want to thank you all for joining us. I hope to see you at town meeting. Um, it's the, it's the legislative branch of our government, uh, very, very important. Um, very, very, uh, important that people be there, and, uh, hope to see you there. Thank you.
Hey, Michael, one, 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 one quick question.
Yes, Mark.
At the auditorium, that December first, is this gonna be Zoom oriented, the two?
No, it will not, Mark. Unfortunately, we don't have the capacity or the ability legally or technologically to do, um, open town meeting through Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, good night, everyone. Hope to see you on Wednesday.
And. Thank you.
Thank you.